Hello, everybody. Thank you for being with us. We'll call this meeting to order at, what is it, six thirty-four? And we'll begin with the moment of silence. Now if the members will rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is to swear in our newest board member and our newest re-elected board member. And so, Bob, we'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have the pleasure this evening of two piers of allegiance. One is obviously for his second term and one is for the first term. Mr. James Herndon for the first term and Tasha White for the second. The oath will be administered at the same time, meaning the two people, Mr. Chairman, at the same time. Have to laugh at what you said. We are very fortunate this evening to once again have Judge Rafaela Stroud with us. She is a member of the magistrate court, a judge here in DeKalb County, but she also serves and has served on our city court for twenty years. Actually, she's going, I think, into year twenty-one now, though she doesn't look old enough to possibly have done that. But she has been the chief judge for the last four years of our municipal court. She just, I honestly, and I do need to say this to her, I, one, had never seen anybody administer an oath better than he did last night. And I have, believe it or not. And I, and I had, after the meeting, the next day, somebody come up to me who was here and said, "Judge Stroud administered the oath better than anybody I've ever seen." And I thought, "If somebody told me that, I'm ready to take it."
I can't wait.
So we're really pleased to have her back here.
Absolutely.
There are tricks to that, and I think she knew how to do it. So we would ask Mr. Herndon and his family and Ms. White, if you and your family here to come up and judge out if you would be so kind. We will turn it over to you to administer the oath.
I think that's pressure, isn't it? I said we can do that again. So, we're gonna, we're gonna do it at the same time, of course. And I, Ms. White, I shall do solemnly swear that I will execute the duties of the Office of School Board Members to the best of my ability. That I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money to this state. And that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States any other state or any foreign state which I am by the laws of the state of Georgia prohibited from holding. That I am otherwise qualified to hold this office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and Georgia. That I have met all resident requirements as defined by the Constitution and laws of Georgia. We're going to sign this one and then there's a written oath that you will sign and that will be notarized tonight. See that question?
You actually have to sign twice. Yep, that's the oath that's just given you. Then you have to read the next oath. And be sure you agree with it, because you're swearing to uphold it. Day is fourteen. Let's get him to sign it, then I'll witness it, and you can sign his final signing.
It's too late now, James. Now, we've gotta get sign that one and then we'll get it notarized. Should we do that now?
Yep.
You will. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, the two board members that have been sworn have been duly elected. The election has been properly certified. They have been properly sworn, and it has been notarized. They are now official members of this board for the second term and first term respectively, and authorized to do business on behalf of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. We are excited to have Tasha back, grateful that you are willing to serve again, and very happy to have James on board. We have a, we have a, we have a new board, and it's gonna be interesting, because anytime you put five new people together, it's gonna take us a while to sort things out. But I feel like we've, we've got a real good chemistry, and I think it's gonna continue. And I look forward to what James' contribution to what's a good, strong group. If y'all would like to say something, or not, whichever you want.
I just wanna thank the community for having faith in me and standing by me and being so supportive. I just, it makes me think back four years ago when we were, when I didn't have a clue what I was doing and felt called all out of place, but, you know, excited. And now it just feels good to kind of be in this spot and, and look forward to working with a new group of people to, to achieve some of the things that we want to achieve. So, thank you for having me again, guys.
I, I wanna, I wanna thank Tasha, who encouraged me to run. I was sitting right there when Garrett said that he wasn't interested in running, and I, I was here to complain about something. Unsurprisingly, Garrett said he wasn't gonna run, and then I met with Garrett, and Garrett said that he was exhausted. And then I met with Tasha, and Tasha said that she found this job to be incredibly rewarding, and she had a lot of work to do. And then she welcomed my participation, and I went home and talked to my wife and said that, as a former teacher in a city that I believe in, this is a seat that I was excited. And I've found all four of you to be incredibly supportive. I look forward to listening and learning, not just from you, but from my friends and neighbors. And can't wait.
Well, our first, our first order of business, or our next order of business is the election of officers. And for that, I'll turn the meeting over to David.
All right, thank you very much. So our first order of business is to elect a chair. Are there any nominations for the role of chair for the board?
I nominate Mr. Jones.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, I'll pass on a ballot. If you could circle your selection on the ballot. And then write or sign your name there at the bottom, please. All right, you are unanimously elected chair. Congratulations, Mr. Jones. Do we have any nominations for the role of vice chair of the board?
I nominate Ms. White.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Okay, I will pass out the ballot. Please, repeat the same process. And Ms. White, congratulations, you're elected unanimously.
Really?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, I turn the meeting back over to you, Mr. Jones.
All right, our first, our, our next item is the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the December ten board meeting.
We have agenda revisions first, if we can do that real quick.
Do we have any revisions to the agenda?
I have one. I'd like, if we could move the equity spotlight from under informational reports to occur right after the existing, the other spotlight, because we have students here, and that way they can get home and to bed.
Anything else? Okay. And next, approval of the minutes from the regular monthly meeting on December ten. Any changes? So those will be entered as written, I guess. And that brings us to our spotlight, our two spotlights.
Yeah, two spotlights.
All right, good evening. We are here from College Heights Early Learning Center. This is Carla, Dr. Carla Zizik. She is our instructional coach. And Jenny Kennedy, who's one of our longtime parents. And we're gonna talk a little bit about our school-to-heart-to-home conscious discipline parent workshop series. A little bit about the series, it's a, it's a, it's over the course of seven months. We do a parent workshop monthly, and it's all about educating parents about conscious discipline. So, a little bit about what is conscious discipline? So conscious discipline is an evidence-based discipline approach. And it is the foundation that we've been doing at College Heights for almost eight years now to support our social-emotional development. We view behavior as a form of communication, and it focuses on the adult first disciplining him or herself. So basically, we are teaching skills to the adults first, because we can't, as an adult, expect to teach a child if we don't have a skill first. So that's what we wanna do with these workshops. Teach the parents and the, really what we're looking to hope to get out of a child when it comes to self-discipline and self-regulation. It really prioritizes connections and relationships. As I said, it's evidence-based, and so it's based on three core brain states. There's a survival state, so we're looking at really making the child feel safe in the school environment, home environment. And then it moves to an emotional state, and we are looking at how does that child feel connected? So a child, once a child feels safe, then a child opens and feel connected to that adult. Once the child's connected, then we move on to the executive state, which is really all about problem-solving, which is the ultimate state where we're trying to get the children to is problem-solving. Once they can problem-solve, they can learn how to self-regulate and problem-solve through behaviors and discipline and any kind of conflict that may come up in the classroom or the home environment. So the goals of this workshop series is to teach the adult and really have the adult as the learner. So we're looking at, through this session, to really help educate parents about what the foundation is of conscious discipline, the whole brain research and development, where it's coming from, moving on to teaching adults social-emotional intelligence. And it's through a series of different skills, which Carla's gonna talk about in a minute. We really look at this as an opportunity to provide a connection from school to home. And then, most importantly, is really looking at, as parents, as partners in the child's learning. And so we really look at the child in College Heights as a comprehensive learning. So we want, it's not just about the teachers, it's also about the parents. So we wanna give the parents the same tools that we're using at College Heights. This came about last year in support of our school improvement plan. Social-emotional development has been one of our goals for the past few years, to really support that in birth to pre-K. And we looked at how we can really collaborate with the parents. And so this was really birthed through that school improvement plan. And so this is our second year of doing these workshop series. And it's very, I think it's, I like to say it's very well-attended. And we've had a lot of parents come, it's very engaging. Dr. Duty actually came to one of the sessions last year. So that's kind of the goal of what, why we're doing this. I'm gonna turn it over to Carla, and she could talk a little bit about the discipline and the skills of conscious discipline.
Thank you. So the idea of these seven skills is that we start with teaching adults, and teachers and parents are part of that, these different skills first. So you can't have a child learn something that you can't demonstrate yourself. So you want children to be composed, you have to model composure. You have to give them encouragement. You have to use your assertive voice and teach them how to be assertive by you being assertive. We give them choices and give them positive choices where they maybe are having to decide between two things. We want them to be adults who can make decisions. So that's kind of where all of this is coming from. We show them empathy so that they can have empathy. We always assume the best, so that's the positive intent. We always assume that their behaviors are a form of communication, not something they're trying to do to bother us, right? So then that means that consequences should be logical and natural, things that happen that we're gonna solve together. And so that's the idea of these seven skills.
She's sneaky.
Sneak attack, slide change. So what you might be wondering is, how is conscious discipline different? Is this something new? Well, really, it is a shift. For many of us, conscious discipline is very different than how we were raised. If you look at our chart where we compare, you can say, okay, so traditional discipline or common discipline is the idea that you can make other people change. Conscious discipline, we change ourselves. You can't change anyone else, you can really only start with you. And the idea that adults can say things like, "Do as I say, not as I do," well, that doesn't actually work with children, because what they really learn from is what you do, and not really the lecture that you give. So we look at discipline as teaching a missing skill. You wanted something, let me teach you how to articulate that thing that you wanted, and let me help you figure that out with a friend, with your friend, or whatever it is. Also, moving away from fear-based discipline and moving towards prioritizing connection and looking at conflict as an opportunity. Instead of avoiding conflict and maybe having rewards or punishments or timeouts or being very reactive, instead, we're looking to the conflict. We're living in that moment, we're self-regulating as the adult, and then we're teaching the skill that the child is missing. So we're really working on the adult first and then the child. And so then it helps you understand that conflicts are really a teachable moment and really something not to shy away from, but to get in there and do that work. That's what we want our children to be able to do as adults, right? So we have to do that first. So we have an adult with us, aside from ourselves. We have one of our parents, this is Jenny Nguyen, and she has three lovely children. And she's attended our workshop twice.
This is my second year. Little background, yes, I have three kids. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner that focuses on primary care, and I have a degree in child development. So you'd think I'd know what I would be doing with rearing girls or children at all. I don't, I don't have a clue. I've got a stack of parenting books beside my bed. I might get a chapter in, get really excited. Doesn't work. And then, this has been a saving grace. This has not only been helpful to know or to carry over what the school's doing at home for consistency, but I found myself in survival mode, a dictatorship at home, you know? I didn't go as far as, you know, this day and age would like, try to stay away from, "Don't say no," and "Don't spank your kid," but still, it was a dictatorship. And wanted to get more of that family-centered, to make opportunities out of these moments that are no longer as disciplined, but as up transfer learning. And this has been great, because it's not overwhelming like a book where there's multiple chapters, multiple ideas. It paces you, it's once a month, it's an hour. You have a chance to discuss it with other parents and be like, "Oh, I'm not crazy, I'm normal. This is occurring in other homes and not just mine." And then it gives you like little tips to go home and practice. And it's just like any school we do, we have to take it one step at a time. We have to practice it to master it. We have to accept that we're gonna fail occasionally, or, you know, a lot as parents. And then we come back and we have another meeting. So it's just great how they have it spaced out. The support that they offer a year after, this is the second year, so I had to go back as a refresher course, because I have now the third one that's growing up and becoming a challenge. And I love it, I would love to see even the, you know, the upper schools start to do it, because I know their teaching modality is different than the conscious discipline. And, you know, to know how do they handle these at school? They've got life coach, or they've got, you know, people in education and child development working with them, but what's the next step to save me from reading, you know, other child parenting books, you know? Be a little bit successful. But no, I'm really pleased with it, and I'm really fortunate to be involved in the City Schools Decatur, and I've been at College Heights a while, and I've got a few more years to go.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I had a quick question. Are all of the teachers trained in conscious discipline? And is there ongoing training for teachers or?
So we're training teachers and parents. And so, and then during their professional learning, their monthly, we just had, actually We just had one on Monday. So it is ongoing, because it's, you know, it's a huge concept and foundation, and so the professional learning is an important piece of it.
And at each meeting, they have one of the teachers, a different teacher's time, come in, give examples of what they're doing in their classroom. And it's nice to see a different face each time and the different experiences they've had with it, with their classroom. It's usually been what the pre-K teachers that come in at night.
Yeah.
Although, all of our teachers birthed through pre-K are trained. And we try to, you know, sometimes there is turnover, so then if there are assistants or whoever who come in, we try to catch them up to speed. But it's a, it's a process, year-long, years, really.
So what, what fraction of the, the parents do you think you're reaching at College Heights?
That's a good question. I would say probably about twenty percent, twenty-five percent. You know, we do hold the sessions in the morning, because we have teacher co-facilitators. What we offer the resources through different manners. So it might be through a newsletter or a classroom, like through a parent conference. So we are able to reach the parents who can actually attend the sessions with the resources. There might be video links or other articles that we can share. But I think the exciting thing is, too, is that this started last year, and parents have sustained the momentum. In fact, there's been parent groups that have happened outside of College Heights at people's houses, where they're having book studies. And so, we might have just a smaller percentage that actually attends it, but the momentum outside of College Heights has been pretty remarkable.
It seems, it seems really great. And I'm so happy to hear that you're doing this, because this is, I mean, I, I would have, I mean, I'm sort of, I've made all my mistakes already. Congratulations.
There's always grandkids, Louis.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And then we have our equity spotlight.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tanisha Sanders, I'm the principal at Oakhurst Elementary School. And with me tonight, I have Suzanne Hawkins, who is our media specialist. Erin Guerrieri is our media clerk, and we have a first-grade student. Bellamy Guerrieri is here to present with us, too. So this year at Oakhurst, the equity team has been, I would say, quite busy. We meet monthly to discuss various race-related topics. As a group, we do professional learning together around the designated topic for that month. And then, within that same meeting, we decide how are we gonna share our new learning with our various stakeholders? So what part of our new learning is going to be shared with parents? How are we gonna share our new learning with the larger staff? And, you know, if any of this is, is appropriate to share with students. So that's all a part of that meeting each month. This year, we've done something a little bit different by developing some equity small groups. So as a staff, we've broken into smaller groups to discuss some of these topics, because what we found is that the larger group is not always appropriate when you're asking staff members to share personal experiences related to race or their personal opinions. They might not be as comfortable sharing in a large group. So the smaller group format has really been helpful, and we're going to continue that over this year and into next year, because the feedback from the staff has been very positive. Equity has been a focus at Oakhurst for several years now. And what I've learned from parents is that there have been parents involved in some of the learning, so doing things such as bias surveys and really learning about race-related topics. But they really wanted us to do something, like have some events and do some tangible-type things. So what we're presenting tonight is an event that we held in the fall during Family Literacy Month, which was November. We hosted an event called the Family Reading Campout, and I will let Suzanne jump in here.
So the purpose of the evening was to expose our students and our families to multicultural books and resources, to begin a dialogue amongst the families about race topics such as inclusion, diversity, and assumptions. We had apps, we had websites for the, the parents to sit down and work with their students or their child. We also provided a reading props, questions to be talking with your child as you're reading the books. And we provided digital resources to aid in the discussions. To support our families in these continued conversations, we've continued to, we have an Instagram account that we update weekly with diverse books. And we also, I have an article in the newsletter that will highlight a diverse book for that week. I'm gonna give you a minute to look at this, because this is really where it hits home. When you say, "Why do we need to highlight diverse books?" In 2018, of all of the children's books that were published, fifty percent were about white characters. Twenty-seven percent were about animals. And then it goes down ten percent African-American, seven percent Asian-Pacific, and, and so on. We have focused on the last several years of trying to find as many multicultural books as we can, race, religion, differing families. We want every child to be able to come in at our media center and find a book that looks like him or her. Some of the activities that we had at the family campout was, Dr. Mary Banks came and read aloud to read aloud to the entire group. She kicked it off for us, and the students and families were encouraged to find books and find a cozy spot in the media center to just sit down and read. We also took this time to remind parents that they can check out books, it's not just students, so we had a lot of that going on as well. And we had something that Bellamy will be telling you about in a few minutes called Reading Without Walls Challenge. If a student read a book about a character that did not look like him or her, then he and she filled out a piece of paper and put it up on our wall, and they got a photograph. We also had Brave and Kind Bookshop there for students and parents to browse. They have a great diverse selection of books. And again, I said that we had apps and websites where it encouraged conversation with the parents and the children about race. We also enjoyed smores, which I think might be one of Bellamy's favorite things.
Yeah, so I'll just touch a little bit more on the why we did this. Like Suzanne mentioned, you know, one of the themes that we've been focusing on in all of our Read Aloud selections and our book orders and the books we highlight has been, are we representing our kids? Can they come in the media center and pull a book off the shelf and find characters that look like them, wear the same clothes as them, share their celebrations? And not only that, but can kids come in and find books with characters that look like the kids that are in their classes? And so, realizing that we have a really valuable opportunity to extend the reach of these amazing books outside of our walls to entire families, we thought that this would be a really awesome opportunity for Family Literacy Month. So, inviting the families into our space to experience the books and then inviting them to take those books home with them, and offering them the opportunities to have those conversations continue or maybe even start those conversations in their own families and homes was something that we were really proud of and we thought was really important. So, we got really awesome feedback from parents expressing gratitude over, you know, not only that we hosted the event, but that their kids are in a school that sees the importance and notices the importance for this kind of exposure and is actively pursuing best practices in this area. So, we were really excited about that. And, did you want to share? You want me to hold you up here?
You could also bend, you could bend the mic down too. You're grounded.
So, what was your favorite part of the family?
My favorite part was when you read a book not about you and about somebody else, like not about somebody that has your skin color, and then you stick it on the wall.
Nice.
Did you like the smores too?
Uh-huh.
Nice.
We brought a short video clip to share just so you can see some of the footage from
The dramatic pause is a nice touch. It's very nice.
I know.
Looks like a lot of fun.
So, what's next for us at Oakhurst? So, for the spring, we are excited about this opportunity to bring parents in. So, we're planning a three-night parent expedition. We're at EL School, and the students experience expeditions twice a year, and so we really want the parents to feel what it's like to go through an expedition. So, we are, our equity team is working to plan that event to really, my hope is really that we start to form connections across difference. So, not just talking about these topics, but being able to connect with other families who may be very different than yours. So, exploring their own biases, sharing some of their perspectives, and hearing the perspectives of others. So, that's what we're planning for, for the spring, and that's all we have.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Anyone?
Just thank you for making our conversation that we're having across the district a tangible experience for the families. Thank you.
I think that brings us to public comment.
And we have no one signed up for a public comment.
Superintendent's comment then.
I have no comments.
All right, David. We have a few good things to tell you all about, so I'll try to go through them quickly. First, congratulations to Fave, which received a bronze award in the 2019 Highest Performing Category in the Governor's Office of Student Achievement. What this means is it, the school has earned a three-year college and career Ready Performance Index, the CCRPI, Content Mastery Score that ranks at least 93rd percentile, which is a terrific accomplishment. So, congratulations to Fave. Also, congratulations to the Renfro Robotics League for their successful competitions in two competitive robotics leagues, the first LEGO League and the first tech challenge. Out of 600 teams in the state, our three teams advanced to the super regionals. So, this is a great achievement. Our tech team is one of 12 that advanced from over 30 teams. So, just congratulations to these 35 kids, every one of whom is a Renfro student, and thanks so much to the Decatur Robotics for making this possible. I can imagine an awful lot of both teacher and parent sweat went into that too, so. Congratulations to the Renfro Girls Swim Team, which finished this season third in the state, and our Renfro Boys Swim Team, which finished seventh in the state. They set 11 new school records this year. Terrific. And we also want to acknowledge the DHS Science Olympiad Team, which competed in 21 different science and engineering events and invitational tournament last month in During the tournament, build events, students test devices of their own design and creation, including an airplane, a temperature detector, a boomer lever, whatever that is, and a gravity vehicle. So, congratulations on a job well done to them. And our DHS Boys Varsity Basketball Team conducted a basketball clinic for the 2019-2020 youth basketball participants, thanks to all those who participated. I particularly like to hear about our students doing this kind of community service and putting on a clinic. I think that's terrific. And finally, a huge congrats to DHS student Caleb Scott for earning second chair in the 2020 All-State Jazz Ensemble. The ensemble will be performing next weekend, January 25th, at the Classic Center in Athens. Way to go, Caleb. Again, great honor. So, a lot of good things happening in the district. And that's it for the Chair, for the Chair's report, which brings us to consent items. We have four?
Yeah, we have four, but we really have three, one, two, and four. The financial reports will bring once we have a financial leader who can put them together.
Okay. Then, do we have a motion to approve items one, two, and four of the consent items?
I move to approve items one, two, and four of the consent items.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, that motion carries, and that brings us to our single informational report, which is Development Report.
And that, again, is just the placeholder where we put Development Report. There's no changes from last time, is that correct? It's the same report as last time, there haven't been any meetings due to the holidays, so there's no difference there.
For James' benefit, we can, we are free to discuss this if anyone sees something interesting in the report.
Absolutely.
But we're putting it out and putting it in the agenda simply so that we have the information, sort of with an agreement that we don't need to talk about it every time. I don't mean to discourage anyone for any questions, but I just wanted to make that clear. So, with that, we'll move on to action items.
There are no action items.
Wow. All right. Okay, our, let's see, so we have discussion items. Number one is monitoring reports and board work plan.
Okay, so there's an attachment there for monitoring reports. So, at a previous meeting, we discussed our approach to how we are going to be doing monitoring and policy governance and some of the challenges that we face with the scope of the reports we are trying to do, and how they were duplicative of many reports that already exist. And so, we discussed it and decided, let's come up with something that fits with when data naturally comes out, when it's available, things we're putting together anyway because we are doing them for state reporting or something like that, and come up with a little bit more realistic plan that allows the board to do their duty to monitor that the board policies are being implemented and is not overly burdensome on the administrative team so they can really focus on the things that are most important to our school district. And so, Cabinet got together and put together this schedule here. We tried to put together a schedule that reflected both the regular meetings and the board work session. And then we also put in a section called Posted Report, because some of these are just reports that should just be available, they don't necessarily need to be discussed. And so, in general, you'll see in the footnotes there, we're trying to answer the question, how does the board know administration is doing what they've been asked to do and are completing what they've said they would complete? That was our goal in putting together this schedule. So, you'll see that we have a series of reports there that we would present, and we are creating a report repository on our district website. One of the things that is challenging is when you want to go back and find a report and try to figure out where it is, and having to go through board agendas to find it, we are going to create a landing pad for that on the district webpage. So, everything you see here listed as a report will have a single home on the district website. They'll still be in the agenda, but the final version of the report that's ready for public consumption will be posted in that repository. So, if, you know, it's some, you know, over the summer, you decide, hey, I really want to look at that enrollment projections report, you'll have one spot to go to and find, and so we're trying to get that organized. And so, Esten and Courtney are working on that and figuring out how to structure it to make it as useful as possible. The, when data are released, there are times that data come out that don't necessarily align perfectly with this schedule because a lot of data come out at once, and we didn't want to overburden doing all kinds of reports at once. And so, instead, what we'll do is when data come out, we'll put together kind of a summary that we can share and post on the website, but it's not something we'll be discussing necessarily at that moment, and we'll discuss it at the time that it actually shows up on the report schedule. And that way, we can be responsive and people can know what's going on with some of our data, especially for things that end up in the news and things like that, but we may or may not be discussing it at exactly the same time. And then one of the big pieces here is the District Improvement Plan, which you will see throughout here every other month, doing a District Improvement Plan update. So, the District Improvement Plan is the plan that the administrative team uses to guide our work, and it is something that we look at on a regular basis. And we have come up with a way of presenting that and other action plans in a tool that will allow the community, board members, anyone who's interested to follow along with how we're doing on those plans. And so, it will be available, it'll be on the website and up to date, but we will also, every other month, provide an update of the key things that have happened over the last two months in the District Improvement Plan. So, for those who are unable to look at a regular basis or who would just like more of a summary and then know where they might want to look further, you'll have that opportunity. So, you'll see that kind of forms the backbone of this monitoring cycle is getting through those. And then, down near the bottom, in March, you'll see the Operations KPIs, those are key performance indicators. And so, for the operational areas, we're going to, there are some well-adopted KPIs in school districts that, for things like nutrition and transportation and facilities, and we're going to adopt several of those, and we will be reporting out on those so you can monitor the operational side. But you will see, we're really trying to focus as much as possible on more the delivery side of our, of what we do, not as much on the operational side. You've heard me say before that it's really easy to talk about buildings, buses, and budgets, the three Bs, but that's not necessarily what's most important for us to be spending our time on. And so, we tried to balance that out in this schedule. Any questions that I can answer about that?
This is good. I really like the, having the landing page for all of the reports, so it'll be accessible.
I think that'll help a lot.
Yeah, I think that'll be very helpful.
Yeah. And like all of our things we put together, of course, this can be a living document. And as we start implementing it, if we find something's not working quite right, we'll tweak it, you know, this is not carved in stone, but this is what we will plan to work from until we make whatever changes we all agree to.
Thank you for putting this together, thanks to you and your team. It's really helpful. I like the way that you have mapped out also just on the calendar, the things that we know we need to do every year, but that way we don't miss them. And then also, we can more thoughtfully plan our work sessions to coincide as much as possible with those things that come up regularly. It really makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Awesome. I apologize for not emailing it beforehand, but is the number four on the subpoint, like District Improvement Plan, seems like a broad category with many subplans? Is there a plan to define that, or is that going to just remain a big umbrella thing?
So, the, what we envision for the updates is, for instance, that, let's say we did a lot of work in the Equity Action Plan and in the portions of the District Improvement Plan related to equity, that might be our topic for that month, and we'll focus on those things. And maybe the next two months later, maybe we've done a lot of work on the Wellness Plan, for instance, and that will be what we will focus. When I say District Improvement Plan, while that is one plan with the three pillars that we've talked about, at some point, there are other plans we develop that are much more specific for where areas are big, like with equity, for instance. So, there will be some key things in the District Improvement Plan, and then there's a whole separate Equity Action Plan. And for these purposes of what we're reporting out on, it would encompass all of that.
And just to say out loud, the three pillars are literacy, equity, and wellness?
No, the three pillars are, oh, now you put me on the line. Are achieving, or no, I don't know the exact words, equity, student achievement, and culture and climate. Did I do all right? Okay, good, I got a thumbs up, good. Yeah. If we want the actual words, we'll have to ask Maggie.
You got the thumb up. Very good.
And so, Dr. Dooty, for the February Boardwork Session, when will we determine, how do you determine?
Thank you for pointing that out, I meant to speak about that. So, there are two that say TBD, and we purposely didn't put anything there because we tend to have topics come up that we want to have a work session about. Sometimes it'll be about legislative things, sometimes it'll be like a joint session with the city, things like that. And so, we didn't want to put a topic on every month and make it feel like we couldn't add other things. If we end up having a topic we want to put there, we're happy to do that, but we also wanted to leave a little more wiggle room there.
And I would, I would think, I mean, that's one of the, I appreciate you not doing that, but that's part of, it's going to be guided by what we want to do.
Exactly.
Last year, we tried to schedule those in advance, and I think we should do that again to the extent possible. Last year, we had a work session actually devoted to the work plan, which I thought was beneficial because we could map out what we were going to try to accomplish in the year. And so, I think we ought to put that as a, as a... And so I, I think we ought to put that as a, as a, you know, maybe we could spend an hour on it when we, because we have to reschedule the January work session. And, and I think we ought to spend some time thinking through, have we got the, are we meeting our priorities with the schedule? Because there's a limited amount of stuff that we can do. And some of these, no, like, I think we probably will, or at least, we'll have to decide as a group, but I think we'll have more work sessions than we currently have listed.
Quite possibly, yes. These are, these are the ones that traditionally we have done on a consistent basis.
Right.
And then some of those months also, we have conferences that could end up doing that.
Quite possibly, exactly.
Like June, for example, is always the GSBA.
And December.
That's the other thing, and the work plan, we, and we've already had a lot of discussion about it, but we need to put down what we're going to do as a group, in terms of board development. And I think like this year, we're going to try to be a little more local, and a little bit less out of town.
Right.
So we can do more GSBA and less Philadelphia, or Colorado.
What's the next one?
Chicago.
Chicago. But anyway, we need to map all that out, and we need to do it, not now, but soon.
Yeah, the, the other thing is, just because there's a topic listed for a work session, doesn't mean that's the only thing, right? Like Louis was saying, we can always try to carve out some time. We, we try not to not make them too long, but there's oftentimes, we can fit two topics within a given work session.
We do try to keep those strictly to, I think it's two hours we've been doing.
Yep, correct.
Okay, thank you, David.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Any other comments or questions? Alright. Alright, the next discussion item, then?
The budget. Can you guys put my screen up there? Alright, so what is in your packet is draft one of the budget. So just a quick reminder that we have greatly accelerated our process this year to move things much sooner, with the goal of having a, a, basically a final budget at the February meeting, so that we can then use that in posting positions, in sending out contracts. Many of you know, but some of our other stakeholders may not know, in the past, the budget is decided so late, we have to send out teacher contracts with this year's salary on them, and then we follow up the next year with a letter saying, well, here's your actual salary, right? And that has always been a frustration, very understandably, that it's kind of a trust us, we'll fix the, fix it later. And so, our goal is that we will have this budget determined in enough detail that we will be able to send out those contracts with the actual salary for the following year, and not have to do that follow-up. So it'll bring a lot of, a lot more certainty for our employees who get contracts. The other thing is, it allows us to get moving much faster on our posting of positions. And so, we're starting this week, trying to get a feel for staff who know they are not returning, either because somebody's moving, they're going on to other opportunities, they're retiring, et cetera. We've got a job fair planned, and things like that, that we want to be able to move quickly on. So for instance, after the February meeting, when we plan to present the budget, we have a job fair scheduled for the Saturday after that. So we can start right away with filling positions. So, so far, so good, things are going really well with the budget. Ms. Hurst helped me put some of this together before she left, and, and I was able, she got enough of it together, I could go from there to put together what you have in front of you tonight. The first page is the Fiscal Year 20 Budget. So this is our current budget, just for your reference, in case you want to see, or kind of remember what the budget was that you approved. The second page is our fund balance, and on our fund balance, we've got, this is the money that is basically like a savings account, right? This is the money that you budgeted a certain amount of revenue and expenses, and you try to not spend more than you bring in, and you oftentimes have a little extra. And that extra is, some people would call it like a rainy day fund, right? Like, how do you make sure to stay stable enough that you can make payroll, that you can keep everything going through the summer, when some of your revenues aren't coming in, and you need to still be paying people, things like that? You may recall, last year, the year before, there was a hiccup with, I think Fulton County taxes, and there were people who may not, weren't going to get paid, because they weren't getting the revenue in, and they had to borrow money in order to pay the employees, and then get it back, and all these. The reason for the fund balance is to cover things like that, so that you have a little more predictability in your cash flow. Our fund balance, the dollar amounts are listed there, and so you can see what the actual amounts is. I'm actually going to go to the next page, which is, what is the fund balance as a percent of annual expenditures? So this is a standard way of looking at fund balance, and those red lines there on that chart represent, the board policy says, we need to maintain a fund balance between four and fifteen percent. And so what you know is that, in the past, and as it shows here, we have been over the fifteen percent. And so what we typically do is, we use that extra money, and apply it to the next year's budget, to get that under fifteen percent for that coming year. What we noticed, and what Mr. Goble especially pointed out, was that tends to happen year after year after year after year. And so we adjusted how we approach our budgeting, and became much more conservative in what we budget for revenues, and what we, or much less conservative, I'm sorry, in what we budget for revenues and expenditures. And so you'll see that percent did come down a little bit. I would anticipate that it should come back down a little bit more in the coming years, as we've adopted that philosophy. What I want to point out is, this is really provided us with a great opportunity. If you look at the difference between the blue line and the top red line, that is $2.4 million, okay? And if you look at the difference between the blue line and the bottom red line, that's $6.2 million. So that window, 2.4 to 6.2, gives us some opportunities. And at the end of this presentation, I hope we can come back and have some discussion about some of the things we could do with that money. So just some food for thought, that's where you could, one of the other things that Mr. Goble brought up a lot was, start that long-term planning for capital improvements, right? So we can designate those funds, and say, we're setting aside this much money for future capital improvements. So if in the future, we get to the point we need to build additions, or we need to do some kind of capital work, rather than having to go for a GO bond, we might already have that money saved. And so there are a lot of advantages to that. Another thing you can do is, typically, you would use those for one-time things. So sometimes a district will say, alright, we did, we weren't able to give as big of a cost of living increase the past year, as we really would have wanted to, so let's take a chunk of that money and divide it out amongst the employees, and give them a bonus at the end of the year, to kind of make up for what we would have done if we knew that we had some of this money at the end. And a ver, and a variety of other things. So there will be some ideas I, I hope we can talk through there. The next page is our General Fund Revenues. And so what you'll see there is the Fiscal Year 19 Budget and Actual, and then what the percent of budget to actual is. And then you'll see, and, and that is all audited and everything, so you'll see the actual results there. The FY 20 Budget is our current one, and the FY 21 Budget is the draft that we're looking at tonight. A couple things, the tax numbers, this is the first year, you may recall, that we collaborated with the City of Decatur, and had a Georgia State University study done on tax revenue projections. And so that number right there represents the number from the Georgia State Study, plus about $325,000 for alcohol tax. Another question we always get is about, go ahead.
Would you repeat that?
Yes, so the number for the FY 21 Taxes represents the value from the Georgia State University study we did with the city on tax projections, plus $325,000 we anticipate getting from the alcohol tax, for this number right there.
That number, a big number.
The other question we often get, so I'm just going to address it, is the tuition number. So just a reminder, that would include any of the tuition for Frazier, or ECLC, and we still have 10 students who were grandfathered when we stopped accepting tuition students. So every year, that goes down one or two, and we are down to 10 students. So that's what that number represents.
Why do we have such an increase in the local taxes in FY 19?
Where are you looking?
$972,000 instead of a projected 360.
I don't know, good question, I'll have to find out. Okay, that is General Fund Revenues. On page five is our Tax Revenue specifically, so you can see here what the taxes were that we levied, and what our millage rates were. And then what that net increase or net change in taxes. So the taxes that actually end up getting levied, getting levied, will vary for two reasons, right? One will be additional property assessments, so either some of the assessments go up, or there are new properties that maybe have a development put on them, or a house gets built, or something like that. And the other is through the setting of the millage rate. So those things impact how much we rec, or receive in revenues for taxes. And then on the next one is Taxes, again, on page six, and this is the Budget versus the Actual, and it shows you what was actually levied. So for example, in 2019, we budgeted $32.8 million in taxes. We actually levied $33.5 million, and we actually received $33.9 million. And so I don't know about you, but I was always confused, how is your actual more than what you'd levied? And that's because people are paying back taxes, and catching up, and things like that. So we don't know the actual yet for 2020, but our budget was 39.7. And based off of, if, if we have a similar collection rate to what we've had in the past, I would forecast that that will be almost, the actual will be almost exactly what we budgeted. On the next one, QBE is Quality Basic Education. This is how we get funding from the state of Georgia. There is a very, very complex formula for how that funding comes to us, and I would love to present a master class on it sometime, but I'll save that. The, part of what, just a quick reminder, and you actually saw it on another slide, is that there is what they have, the local, called the Local Fair Share. And so every district in the state contributes $5,000 back to the state, and so you never actually see that money. And it's basically a way of making sure that every district doesn't rely just on state money, they also have to have some local money. So that number is reflected, you may recall, we used to have austerity. Governor Deal, right before he left office, did figure out how to get rid of those austerity cuts. So I took that slide out of here, but that was something that impacted us, especially cumulatively, very significantly for many, many, many years. But it's good that that's gone, and so that shows you what we budgeted for our earnings, and what we actually received from the state for funding. I would forecast, based on our three-year average, I would forecast that we're going to get another probably million to million and a half dollars over our budget, based on the students that we've received between October and March, of what we anticipate in March. So most years, it does go up, and we'll see if that holds true, but we'll know more after the March county. Page eight is about expenditures, and so again, it's the FY 19 Budget and Actual presented there, and then you've got the current budget we're operating under, and the FY 21 Budget. So one of the things you can see here, and this FY 19 Budget is a perfect example of being way too conservative in the budget, that 91% number down at the bottom means that we only spent 91% of what we had budgeted, which in some way is good, right? You don't want to spend more than what you budgeted, but you also want to spend closer to what you budgeted. And so where you can see that is, that really had a big impact, was up here in the personnel, where the vast majority of our costs are in personnel. You'll see in the benefits side, we only spent 84% of what we budgeted, and on the personnel side in general, 94%. So that had a pretty impact, a pretty big impact on the budget, and that is one of the reasons why the fund balance is what it is. We have quite a bit of money there that we can allocate to other things. On page nine is the Budget versus Actual for the expenditures. And so again, you can see that in the past, we've hovered right around 95% of what we budget, we spend, and in 2019, it was 91%, so a little lower than I would like to see as we look at those numbers. We want to, we want to budget more accurately, so we don't have too big of a window there. On page 10, our Expenditure Assumptions. And so what we did here is, just put together a very bare-bones budget. And I'll talk more about, about that in a minute, but basically, traditionally, we do a cost of living adjustment of 2%, and we do step increases for all the employees who are eligible for a step increase. And then amazingly, TRS, the rate for employer contributions, is actually going down next year, to the tune of $500,000. And so, to me, that's kind of a bare bones, this is the bare minimum that we would want to do, unless we were really in a financial strait, where we couldn't even do like cost of living adjustments. So that adds up to 1.4 million. In a minute, I'll talk about a draft 1.1 Budget that I sent you, that goes a little bit beyond this. And then finally, the last page is the Actual FY 21 Budget. And so this just reflects all of those things that we just talked about, all in one spot. And you'll see, the revenues over expenses is where you end up with the, what is the money? If, if all of these things hold true, the revenue, the revenue projections, the expense projections, we have about $2 million of wiggle room of where to add all the other needs that we have, and still remain within the, our means of what we have, without dipping into fund balance, and without changing millage rate, are two of the assumptions there. Okay, before we jump into discussion, I'd like to just jump to the Version 1.1 Budget, just for a second, just to show you what's different on that. If you go to the second to the last page, I'll pull it up here if, oh wait, I think I printed some more. I've got all kinds of goodies for you here, so take a whole section, or just pass down whole sections.
There's one packet.
Yeah, in one packet. Ashaki already collated them for us.
Oh, it's a packet, you don't know.
Alright, so somewhere in that packet, you have a, a budget document that, at the very bottom, is labeled 1.1. And what I want to show you, the differences there are on page 10. And what I did was, I put together kind of the next level above, excuse me, a bare bones budget. And that has, one thing, it has additional positions due to growth. So yesterday, we had a great meeting with principals, and we talked through what our projections look like for next year. I shared with principals that, that I think cooperative strategies, Karen is here with us tonight, do a very good job with long-term enrollment projections, but I think principals do a little better job with next year's enrollment projections. I think they know a lot about what's happening in the community and in their schools. And so what we did is, we took the enrollment projections that we received a couple months ago, and we talked through the by-school-by-grade numbers, and what things might be impacting those, and what they would anticipate seeing next year, based on their historical knowledge, based on all that we know about different projects going on with housing and whatnot. And we all came to an agreement on what we would use as our enrollment projections for our staffing purposes for next year. And that resulted in 320 additional students, and so traditionally, that would be about 15 FTE. So if we budget for growth, that would be about another $1.35 million. Then the other thing that we have done, and we'll get into in a minute, is the budget requests. You may recall, we put on a, we have a system every year, where any of the budget holders can put out requests. Sometimes we call them Budget Improvement Requests, sometimes they've been called Business Cases, you've heard different terms. But basically, it is, what are the needs that are out there that we don't necessarily fund, and we may or may not know about? And we ask them to put in a request, and we really emphasize this year, do not come back to us later and say, oh, I forgot to ask for this. If you think you might need it, ask for it. Even if you think it's a crazy idea, but you think it's something that's important, ask for it. And so they listened, and we ended up with, I think, 107 proposals, which is awesome. It's way more than we can possibly fund, but that's kind of the point of what we want. And so through a process, we went through, I'll talk about in a minute, we ranked the proposals, and I added the top three of those here. The one that came in the highest was culturally responsive teaching training of trainers, for $35,000. The second one was the compensation, compensation changes. You may remember the report of tracking and retaining. You may remember the report, Tracking and Retaining Staff Report, I included a copy of that here for you tonight. And that was our comprehensive analysis of how competitive we are with other school districts in the area in every single category of employee, right down to coaches. And not instructional coaches, athletic coaches. And what we pay and how we fit in with other school districts. And so what this request does, one thing it does is it brings our cost of living adjustment up to three percent. And then it also makes some other salary schedule changes recommendations, which I'll show you where to find those details in a minute. But that's seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Not surprising, since personnel is the vast majority of our budget. And then the third request that was ranked number three was a request for a programs for Afrofuturistic warriors and Afrofuturistic daughters programs, and for seventy-five thousand dollars. And then the rest of that request remains the same. And if you look at the next page after that, you'll see what that does is it basically uses up that two million dollars of revenue over expense. It's negative hundred twenty-nine thousand four twenty-six now. So that is, if we were just going to say, all right, we've got these parameters, we're comfortable with them, but we don't want two million dollars left over at the end, that would be probably the most logical thing to do, to use up that, that money after that. Okay, that's a lot. I would like to briefly go through the really big document, just so you know what it is. It's not something we need to go through tonight. But I wanted you to have time to look at it before we have our work session, because it's pretty dense and there's a lot to get through. So I just want to talk you through what's there. And then you can take a couple of weeks to look at it, and we can answer questions and stuff at the work session if needed. But basically, it starts off with just an overview of the process, which I talked about a little bit already. But basically, all those budget requests came in. Susan and I processed them all and kind of got things organized, and then Cabinet went through and looked at every single proposal and scored them on a rubric. And because we didn't have that rubric developed in advance, and best practice would be that we would let people know what the rubric's going to be, we actually, I ended up combining the scores two different ways, because some of the things, some people thought to put in their proposals and others didn't, and I didn't feel it was fair to say, you should have known to include that. So I scored them two different ways, and we looked at the top twenty-five in both, and we ended up with twenty-seven. So the vast majority of them were in the top twenty-five either way. So we took those top twenty-seven to what we call admin council, which is all the principals and cabinet. And we split up into groups, and we had a survey of all these things we were looking for in the proposals. How does it fit with our district improvement plan? Does it address our equity initiatives? Is it something that should be funded this year, this year, or can it wait? Are there other ways to do this that don't require this? You know, those kind of things. And so they went through and scored them. Every proposal got scored by two other groups, and then we ranked them from one to twenty-seven. In this document, I also included a table to show just what are, what are the total requests. So there's eight million dollars of requests altogether. And you can see the vast majority of them are recurring costs, and then you can also see where they are by department or school. And I share a staffing and budget timeline, which I referred to a little bit earlier, of how, how far advanced we are in the process from previous years. And then there's one with a big five point three million on the top of it, and if you see a landscape report, that is, if you look at every single personnel request that appears in any of the proposals, if we were to say, yep, we're going to do all of them, it would add up to five point three million dollars per year. Those numbers in reds are the points from that point system that we use for staffing positions. So just, it helps give you a feel for what are some of the needs that people see out there and what would they like to, to see us do. And then following that, I have a whole series of sections. The first section is all of the top ranked requests, so those one to twenty-seven. And so where I was referring earlier to where could you look to find more information, that's where you'd look for those top three. And it will, it will show you the proposal itself, it will show you how it was rated by those two teams, and sometimes they have other supplementary information with them also. Then after that, I created quite a few groups of proposals, because there were kind of themes. So there was one group we called Personnel Request, Personnel Request Group A. Those are requests for things that typically would hand, be handled through our normal staffing process. So what we learned as people put in their proposals is we weren't clear enough to say to people, like, if you're expecting fifty more students, should you be putting in a budget request for teachers, or should you assume that's covered in the staffing process? So some, you'll see some people did it, some people didn't, and that's fine. That's all in Group A, okay? Group B are things that would traditionally not be handled through that normal staffing process. So those may be central office positions, they may be a new type of position that's not part of our staffing model or something like that. The next group is equity requests, so things that are mostly related to our equity initiatives. The next one is about professional learning. The next one is growth related, so it's things that are highly connected to the growth of the school district. So more students, need more supplies, or something like that. The next one are school or department budget requests. So these are things that would typically be covered under an existing school or department budget. But they're saying, by putting in their requests, they're saying, we don't quite have enough money there to do what we want to do. The next one is operations and facilities requests, so these might be things like we need a, you know, asphalt replaced or something. Probably things we will do under a different, we won't use under, do under general fund, will probably want to incorporate under a different funding source like SLOST, for instance. And then the last one is just efficiency and business operations requests. So things that are about trying to make the district operate more efficiently, or things related to the backend business operations of the district. So it's a lot to get through. We tried to get it as organized as possible, and we do not need to get into that one tonight, but I just wanted you to have as much time as possible to look through that, because it's a lot to go through. So we will definitely talk more about that at our work session. So, that's all that I have to say.
The first thing, I mean, this is awesome, to have the, we've never been, this, we've never had this level of discussion about budget priorities and, and this level of explanation, and so it's really very nice. Do y'all have questions or anything?
I do, but I don't need to start if anyone else wants. I might jump around a little bit, because my questions were kind of from all over. But I'll throw one out there, just because we just finished talking, talking about this list. Are the twenty-five items in order of priority, or are they all just?
So the ones that have a red number in the corner, one to twenty-seven, are in the priority order of the scores that they received.
And how many of the, are any of those items, or two of them are in one point, budget one point?
Three, the top three are in the version one point one budget.
The top three of the twenty-seven.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. And I think altogether, if I remember right, I think there's a hundred and seven proposals altogether.
Is that complete list somewhere?
Um, no.
Okay, good.
Although I could get it for you if you'd like.
Could you describe the ranking process for the one through twenty-seven?
Yeah, no, not at all. So one of the easiest ways, if you go to the number one, the, the one in the big bound document that says number one, and flip to the page after it. What you, these are, that page, at the top, it says Equity and SS, that stands for Student Support, Culturally Responsive Teaching Trainer of Trainers, and then there's a table with, yeah, that's the one, with some numbers. That shows how this proposal was rated by the two groups that looked at it. So this proposal could be enacted by next school year, both strongly agreed. This proposal could be implemented using existing staff, both strongly agreed. So that's where you can see the results of what it looks like. I will note that some of these you want to look at a little differently, and I have stars on the bottom two, because it says, like, this proposal should be funded using an existing school or department budget. That, if you're going to fund it, you actually want that to be on the left side, not the right side, right? Because you're saying you disagree that it can be funded. So I try to draw attention to those. I actually noticed I missed one. This proposal is likely to earn additional fun, oh no, that one should be. Likely to earn additional funding, remember in the budget preparation or presentation about QBE, certain things can earn us more funding. And so the way the state formula works, there are some of these proposals you'll see that could earn us funding, so you might see a more positive response there. And then we ask narrative questions, just how else could the goals of this proposal be achieved at a lower cost? What are other things to note about it? What this proposal would not be needed if, so what, what else could be done, or what else could solve it? What could be sunset to make room for this proposal financially or in terms of staff capacity to implement? So that's something we worry about all the time, is just adding, 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 adding. At what point do you subtract? And so that question was about, are there other programs you now won't need? Or are there other things you can sunset to make room for our personnel capacity to implement? And what other sources could potentially fund all or part of this proposal? So you will see those responses. Now this, that level of detail was only done for those top twenty-seven proposals. The other proposals do not have ratings like that, it's just the proposal.
So Dr. Diddy, I swear I was listening, following, then I, I did get a little sidetracked, because I was anxious to learn more about the Afrofuturistic program. So these twenty-seven proposals have been accepted?
No.
No, we're going to discuss these.
Exactly.
And how many, how, you know, how many are we able to approve, or how much money are we able to?
Good question. So basically, if we keep all of our parameters the same in terms of what we're projecting for revenues, what we're projecting for expenses, if all of those remain the same, we were only able to fit the top three. If we wanted to do those top three, I just picked the top three because they were at the top. After our discussion of what our priorities are, we may decide those aren't our top three, right? So, but there are other variables, right? That is assuming that we don't spend down the fund balance at all. It's assuming a fixed millage rate. There's, there's several assumptions there. And so what we'll want to do is figure out maybe a little more globally, where do these things fit in our priorities? And there may be things that aren't even in the top twenty-seven that we feel are a priority, and they're just not reflected. There may be things that don't appear anywhere in this book, that you feel are a priority, that we need to be discussing and deciding maybe we should try to incorporate that. So in general, based on all of our assumptions, there's about two million dollars of wiggle room after we've given a two percent cost of living and a step increase and get the savings from TRS.
I'll comment on that, since you just mentioned it again. I, I have a lot of, obviously a lot to look at and a lot to study, but my initial reaction is that I would, I believe I will be supportive of bringing COLA up to three percent, because I feel like that will be an investment in our community, in our schools. I think it will also be literally an investment, because if we have more competitive salary and compensation, I think we will have less turnover, and turnover is very costly, not only in terms of dollars, but in terms of the difficulties and the learning, the learning that's lost that walks out the door. And also when we need to replace a teacher, we learn, we have to do a lot of retraining, it also can be difficult for students. I'm grateful that you gave us this report again, because we had some good discussion about the Attracting and Retaining Staff Report last spring. But I think it's timely that we revisit that, to see now that we have the opportunity to make some adjustments where, you know, whether we think that in fact needs to happen to make us more competitive. So I think that that could be a really great place to, to spend some additional dollars that actually will pay dividends in many ways going forward. So that's my comment on the, on the COLA. I did have one question on the budget report, and it was really just trying to find the right version. It was on page five of version, the budget version one point O. And I was just wondering, I noted it in my notes as I was reviewing, tell me when you're there.
Yep.
So page five of the budget draft one. How do we know the twenty-twenty net increase in taxes already?
Great question, and I will do my best to explain it, but there is a delay of when we collect taxes and when we book them.
Okay.
And so it has to do with the fact that taxes are on a calendar year and our budget is on a fiscal year. And so I cannot tell you in detail exactly how it works, but that's why, because they are already collected or at least levied, not necessarily collected.
Okay. And then I also wonder about, I, I haven't read that Georgia State University study yet. Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, nor have I. And so I do not have a copy of it, but it's on my list to try to get.
Because that will be really interesting, because I think a lot of our, it will be helpful information, and I'm, I'm sure a lot of the information that we've collected from our study will also be interesting to the city, so we should.
And just to clarify, because it can be confusing, we are talking about two different studies, like you just said.
Correct, yeah.
We did a study on senior home stay exemption. We also partnered with the city on a study for tax projections, but both use GSU. And so I will get a copy of that. I do not have that right now.
And then I'll make one further comment about, I think it would be prudent to put some funds towards future capital or capital expenses, because I know that we can anticipate that. Our growth has slowed, but it hasn't stopped. And I think it's very timely, since we're now kicking off our facilities planning initiative.
Yes.
And so I think that that will coincide nicely with that conversation.
It's very timely indeed.
That's all I have for now.
Other questions or comments?
I think I'm leaning toward the three percent COLA as well. Actually, having a pretty extensive conversation with a friend moving here, who is a highly sought off, sought after teacher. And I was trying to get her to come here, and she just was notices, noticing the significant difference. And she really wants to live here, but doesn't know if she can make it work. So it just made me bring us back to that conversation, or at least trying to be a little more competitive. So I'm, I'm leaning more towards the three percent COLA and just being more attractive. And the culturally responsive teaching and training of trainers. Those are the two that just kind of stand out for me.
Right.
As priority, and I think kind of fit with what we've been talking about, you know, these last few years as well.
How does that three percent make us competitive with the others?
So it gets us closer. One thing I'll point out is, it's probably obvious, but the report was April twenty nineteen. And other people make other decisions also, and, and time has moved on. And so hopefully, once we get a permanent HR person in place, we'll be able to update this report and get a feel for, did anybody make any dramatic moves that we don't know about? I do know anecdotally, quite a few districts did not match what we did for our district. And so it's quite possible we've made a little bit of gains, and then this would help us get a little bit further. But it also does depend, just a reminder, in that report, we were shooting to be third best, right? And you may recall, at one point, we talked about being number one, but the problem is different districts had made different priorities in different employee groups. So one district may say, we want to pay our teachers a lot, but to do that, they're not paying anyone else much of anything. And another district may say, we want to pay our food service employees a lot, but the other people don't get paid much of anything. And so we found when you tried to be number one, it increased your costs, costs exponentially because of the different philosophies. So, but we thought number three is a little more reasonable. So if we shot for number three across the board, in every employee category, we felt like we'd be much more competitive than we are now. And so just to clarify, that is where those numbers came from, in terms of what we were trying to shoot for. But it is, and you know, any data you collect is old as soon as you collected it, but just, this is a year old. So some districts could have made, potentially made some significant changes. I haven't heard of any such changes, but there could be.
Have we done anything, when you presented that report, one issue that came up is there are some things where we make certain contributions that we were told, the teachers actually would value the money more than the contribution. And same cost to us, we could make our package more attractive. Have we thought about making those changes?
So I will tell you anecdotally, this is just off memory, we did ask a question about what's more important to you, salary increase or contributing to benefits? What's more important to you, salary increase or this? Across the board, it was always salary increase. Was, it didn't matter what the question was that we asked, that was always the highest. That was always the highest priority.
Well, I'm really excited. I can't wait to discuss the Afro futuristic.
Good.
Programs, which as I skimmed, looked like a mentoring program and a lot of the same things I think that the Jensen Young Ladies of Excellence currently do at Renfro. And so to be, to put some money behind those programs and to allow them to extend their reach in the things that they do, I think will really be beneficial. So I'm excited about that.
Good.
So I have a question. The, one of them is just the fund balance. So when our policy says between five and fifteen percent.
Yep.
Where our fund balance is supposed to be and we're not there. And so even with your, you know, your drafts, you know, you're, you're showing a twenty four percent ending fund balance.
Correct.
And so part of this is that we've had this policy, but we've had a different way to project the fund balance. And so we've been consistent with the policy in theory only, but not.
Correct.
Practice.
I would say by accounting rules, we've been consistent with the policy. By kind of how we look at it as non-accountants, it doesn't feel like we've been consistent.
Right. And so we're, we're now tightening it up. It now seems like we're projecting a budget that's actually, either the policy's gonna need to change or, or we're gonna need to have less money in the fund balance.
Correct. And to clarify, actually, the fifteen percent also comes from state law. State law says you cannot exceed fifteen percent.
So that's not gonna change?
Correct. I, I don't anticipate it changing. But what we can do is, and what we should do is, we can do two things. One, we can use part of those funds. So part of why this is a bare bones budget is it doesn't take into account that, right? And so we do have wiggle room from twenty four point one percent to fifteen percent. So that ten percent is money that we could potentially spend, hopefully more on one-time things than not, to get down to the fifteen percent in the budget. And then we also could take some of that difference if we're, if our goal was shooting for fifteen percent and allocate it, I can't remember the exact accounting word they use, but you basically allocate a certain amount of funds and that allows you to not count it as part of your fund balance, but it allows you to kind of create a separate savings account.
For like capital.
For like capital projects. And so we could say, we want to allocate X million dollars for future capital projects. Now, you are not locked in if something changes in the future and you suddenly need that money to pay staff or something like that, you can reallocate it to something else. But the idea being, you allocate it so you know what you're planning to use it for and then it doesn't count as part of your fund balance.
And are we better off doing that than just paying down some of the existing bonds?
Absolutely. I would say so.
So the, all right. I mean, we're gonna have a work session, which I don't know if we've set it up or not.
Well, that's on our future dates for us to figure out.
But I, I agree with the three percent COLA. I also think, and I've always had an interest that we find ways to reward leadership and extra effort and so that our, that we work toward a compensation structure that is not just locked up. And so on the one hand, we do need to be competitive across the board. But on the other hand, I'd like to find ways where these extras, you know, whoever's gonna step up and do the Afro futuristic mentoring should be well compensated for it. And that's a way that we can take the money that we have and put it toward incentivizing the kind of behaviors and leadership that we're looking to.
And you'll actually see some proposals that reflect that.
Across the board. I mean, there's, I always look at it and think, well, I would like to see a bigger bump for, for leaders throughout the district.
Yep.
That's one thing.
Okay.
My other thing is a question. So we've got proposals here that have bubbled up from staff and have gone through a really terrific vetting and evaluating process. I wonder if by focusing on staff, I wonder if there's any need to, and part of this discussion here, but to cast the net just a little bit wider and if you ask the same question to parents, because for some of these things, if we're saying, we've got a little bit of money, we have to be extremely careful about continuing obligations, so we can't hand taxes. But nonetheless, if we're gonna spend the money, should we spend it here or there? You know, parents might answer the question a little bit differently. And, and it all does, it's all about the same, same children that we're trying to serve. And for instance, I'm wondering about ideas like, you know, we've talked a lot about participation fees and basically trying to eliminate them whenever possible.
Yep.
Do we have, and I saw something about athletics.
Correct.
Does it go across the board?
Yeah, there's proposals in there, but.
Okay. What about funding for teachers so they don't have to? I mean, I really don't mind the begging of parents for crayons or whatever, Kleenex or whatever, but, but nonetheless, it's a common, common.
Correct. You'll see some of those in there as well.
So it's all in there?
Not, not all, but you'll see where schools have said, we don't want to have to ask for that and we can't fit it in our budget, so you'll see a proposal there.
Good.
Substitute teachers?
Substitute teachers, I think, is part of the compensation one, but I'll have to double check.
And, and we've got, the other things we've discussed, like the orchestra is already in your budget.
Correct.
Right. Um, school lunches? I know we talked about setting some kind of something up where we get to the end of the year and your school lunch is owed or.
Right. So we're not turning away anyone from school lunch, regular school lunch. And we've actually been able to cover all of that with what has been donated to DEF. There are more people interested in giving money than we can use for it. So, yep.
And we stopped doing the substituting peanut butter and jelly meat, right? We did, okay.
You just get the regular meal.
Okay.
Exactly.
And just one other thing, just big picture. We've had a really nice run with tax base increase for many years now and that we, I'm just kind of a word of caution to be thoughtful about what we take on as recurring expenses for these additional things that we might want because we, we know that that won't always continue. At least we can't count on it when we've lived through lean times too.
Yep.
So just, that's something that I'll be thinking about as we go through this as well.
Not to mention that we just, we just made a hefty increase in the millage and we need to give some of that back if we can.
Anything else? All right.
This is a great, this is a great.
Yeah, this is awesome.
Presentation.
Good.
Very good.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
I look forward to the discussion. Our next item is the senior home stay exemption. We, we put it there as a placeholder because we weren't sure with the legislative session starting and everything, if we'd have anything to discuss and maybe some other things have come up that you want to discuss. I'm not sure.
I don't think so, not yet. I mean, we still need to have our meeting with the city and discuss kind of next steps.
Correct.
So that's kind of where we are, we're still sitting.
Correct. Yep, yep. I have not met with Andrea yet. I think she had, we're shooting for the third or fourth week of January.
And we had discussed putting a committee together?
Yeah. Yeah. Do we want to talk about that tonight?
Yeah, and I mean, maybe we can revisit our conversation about our charge. I don't know if anyone else feels like we have more context for budget in order to have that conversation because, because of timing. And I also think that we can just maybe revisit that conversation. We may not get all the way to a decision tonight or we may feel we are all on the same page to be able to move forward with then convening a committee, which then can, I think, give more context for the city as to what we are able to do from the school system side.
Are we, the meeting with the city, is that the meeting of, is that a joint work session or is that the meeting that's gonna be Tasha and?
Yep, the, the latter.
So she's put that on the calendar for the twenty eighth?
Correct.
Oh, really?
And I, I do think that we need to go into the meeting with a firm understanding by this board about what we think we can afford. Not, not so much into that meeting, but, but the charge to the committee and really, I just think that we need to, to firm it up about the dollar amount. Now, I think we, we had maybe left that a little bit open so that we could have the budget. And I think it's maybe still appropriate to have the budget work session. And maybe we, we accept the number at the budget work session.
Well, I, I feel like, personally, I feel like I have enough information to set it with what I think we've, you know, had an understanding from the last.
Put it out there.
Just what we, what we intended to contribute and what we felt was our, you know, what we felt we could afford. And I think the work session, to me, will get into so much detail about initiatives and things.
Do you want to make a proposal?
Not ready to, to yet. I want to just get a feeling if other members feel like we're ready to have that conversation or if they want to wait for the work session.
I, I will share.
And I guess it might depend.
I really don't think it's related to the work session because the work session is about next year's budget and next year's budget won't be impacted by that conversation, if that makes any sense.
So we don't want to conflate them?
I'll, I'll share because I did it last time and only to get the ball rolling. That, that my starting point or preference, I think, would be that we went into the exemption with a one point two million dollar cost and I think it would be appropriate to set a cap at one point two million. And, you know, Heather. Heather has mentioned it should be on the back end, not the front end because we don't want one point two million to grow to two.
Right.
But so if we say that the project, you know, based on our projections that we're using, you know, as of twenty twenty five, that's the value of the exemption and.
Like in that tool, the last number would be no more than one point two million.
And then leave it to a committee to figure out how to spin the dials to make the adjustments, whether it's total value of the exemption, income limits or whatever in order to achieve the objectives that we put out there in broad terms and maybe some objectives that they come up with on their own. But, but honestly, if we could have a representative committee with the number, I'd be pretty comfortable waiting for their recommendation about exactly how to set it.
I can support that. I think it's important that we give a, some guidance going forward. I think that would be a pretty clear charge and I think it would be an interesting conversation for the committee to look at the different criteria that are typically manipulated and used in exemptions. And I think that tool is going to give us the information we need to be able to feel confident that those criteria will, in fact, cost us what we think it will cost us. So we can go into it with more confidence, knowing that that number is a more dependable number and at least has been vetted by Georgia State and experts.
And can I just clarify, just to make sure we're all on the same page? I think we are, but like the idea of spinning the dials, what we're talking about is using the parameters that are built into that tool that are very standard parameters for senior exemptions. Not, I think what we talked about previously is don't get crazy creative on something that is impossible to implement of what those parameters look like. Is that pretty accurate of what we're feeling?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I, I have one idea, which I, I agree with that. And I think a simple, for, there's a lot of reasons that a simple proposal is best in this kind of arena. Not least because it's gonna have to go through the legislative process and anything complicated, you never know what it's gonna come out, you know, on the other end. One option that we haven't discussed, but that is available is evaluation freeze. And we, we might put that on the table that for seniors sixty five and over, they're, they're like, Cab County has it, a lot of counties in Georgia have it, where you apply for it and their tax, their assessed value of their home does not increase from year to year.
As long as they continue.
As long as they continue to.
Yeah, okay.
That's, I'm not saying we need to do that. I'm saying it's an option. It is very, very standard, you know, as long as the counties have it and, you know, we might throw that into the mix.
Okay.
And if we, if we add additional criteria, we might need to add, ask for help to quantify.
Correct.
What that could cost, since that's not accounted for in that tool.
Right, correct.
Right. Okay.
And in that guidance, again, I know we don't want to go over a certain amount in terms of our cap. And I know that the goals are to limit student enrollment and increase the student enrollment and to allow our seniors to age in place. But do we need to quantify, because I know that there was a discussion about, you know, we.
Did that even happen?
Like, like how much?
Right.
Right.
Right. Do we need to quantify that?
If I remember correctly, we, we went down the road of trying to quantify or talking about, it would be helpful to quantify like how much senior stability is our goal? How much limiting enrollment growth? And then I think we got to the point that since the conclusion of the study was that it didn't work. It didn't control mobility and it didn't control growth. That maybe that what didn't make sense to try to set those? That's kind of how I remember the conversation. So I'm not sure if we want to, that most likely with changed parameters, the outcome of the study would be slightly different, right? But with the parameters as they existed in the current exemption, there wasn't evidence of either of those goals being impacted. Does that make sense? So I'm not sure if we want to try to quantify that or not.
That is, that, I think that's a good summary of the discussion we had last time and that reflects my thought on it, which is that if we set the value, if we set the dollar amount, we can kind of leave it to a representative committee to come up with the equities of how to set it. I, I think it makes sense to provide a general direction. What I wrote down, just for the heck of it, right, as a starting point would be that we'd ask the committee to make some options for the board's approval, but that would, number one, they would come up with a senior home exemption that would, number one, is projected to cost no more than X in year twenty twenty five, based on our tools. And number two is designed to ensure that school taxes are not an impediment to seniors residing in place, right? And so, and, and number two, that it's designed to promote income, age and race diversity within the city of Decatur. I kind of abandoned the business about school populations because it didn't seem to work.
Yeah.
That's just.
I think what you've said is good. I might suggest and want to talk about it, but I, I do remember that in the report, they did say that it's possible that offering an exemption to the lower income population could influence their behavior, but there wasn't data to, to disprove that. And so that also goes along with, I think, allowing senior stage in place and promoting income, age and race diversity within the city. So maybe the part of the charge could be to try to steer the funds that we are allocating toward some of the groups that would be most vulnerable, including in, in, you know, the lower income residents.
I agree with that. I mean, I had that in mind when I, so I think it's.
Yeah.
Doing the words right, but I agree.
So should, I mean, I'm happy to help draft a resolution for a committee like what we had before. If maybe a couple of us could work on that or something, so we could maybe vote on that at the next meeting? What do you think?
I would definitely like by the next meeting for us to vote on that. Since we're talking about it, there's another part, which is that someone told us that Forsyth County just voted on something that said that you get the exemption, but if you get kids actually using the schools, you don't get it.
I have heard about that, yeah.
That's what I brought up at the thing because my buddy proposed that and you told me it was illegal.
I thought it would be. I'm surprised by it, but, but I think that we.
Everything's legal until somebody sues.
Yeah, we'll also let you make it. That's what my man told me.
Anyway, we, we, I guess we could throw to the committee if they would also recommend those types of things to make sure that whatever we do is not abused. I'm not, I don't currently have formulated an idea about whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, but we should explore it.
Okay, so do you want to help draft it?
I can.
Anybody else want to help draft it? We could do one more and not be over.
Yeah, I can help.
Okay.
I'm happy to stand aside too. I mean, I can give you what I've done. The other, in, in terms of the committee, I was thinking that we would probably want to have like a small group steering committee, some appropriate number, maybe nine people. And that we identify both groups and types of skills that we think should be represented. If it's a group, we let those, like, Decatur Active Living is one, Decatur Business Association is one. In particular, we should have a. In particular, we should have a representative of the, the school community, maybe on the parent's side. PTO, PTA, SLT, something like that, somebody from the city. And then I think some expertise, people who really know tax, property tax. This kind of thing. And there's a couple of names. We don't need to discuss them right now, but um we should kind of pool those things and come up with a good. Group, maybe identify a chair, someone who, who'll hold the gavel and then leave it to that steering committee to. Do the broader outreach as appropriate, have a public event or two, you know, to gather input. That's what I was thinking.
Anything else on senior home study exemption? Alright, our final uh report is about, our discussion is about our facilities master planning update. So Karen and Noel, are you?
We're here.
Kicking it off? You're awake still? Karen flew in this morning. That's good. That is good.
I'm gonna um get it started and then I'm gonna turn it over to Karen and I'll hop in and out of our presentations, but I just wanted to. Let you know, we, we have wholeheartedly kicked off our process and today we conducted um three focus groups. We've got six tomorrow. Uh, plus our community meeting tomorrow evening, seven to eight thirty over at Tally Street Elementary. So we've had a very productive day. Uh, we've made some adjustments to our presentation, so this is literally hot off the presses to. Projection numbers and things. Uh, there'll be a couple of places where I'll jump in to just explain one or two uh details that are behind the scenes of this. Um, but Karen, I'm gonna let you. Give yourself an introduction and, and dive right in.
And I'll, I'll share that, um, so I've worked with Karen since Iowa City and she's really awesome. And you guys know that, cause some of you have gotten to work with her too, but um I'm not surprised it's hot off the presses, because Karen's the kind who. Email and she, and she wrote back this morning and said, well, the airplane wifi is not quite good enough, but I'll get to it right away, you know, so. She's that person who's sitting next to you on the plane working while you're trying to take a nap, so anyway.
I'm kind of annoying. So, my name is Karen Daniel Hamburg. Um, I have been involved in a couple of different processes here. Um, I've been involved. I think I have slides on it actually, with the um grade configuration change process as well as the boundary process. Along with that, I, I don't really play a part in the, in the enrollment projections. I do the housing studies though, and you're gonna see data on this too. So, I love maps and everything that has to do with that, so if you have map questions, please ask me. I, I always probably start geeking out about it. I just wanna introduce what a facilities master plan is. Um, I'm sure you're aware, you've, you've had one in the past. But what we base this on is projected enrollment, educational framework, the condition and utilization of your facilities. Um, community values and input, and then the overall district mission and goals. So pretty much what we're trying to do is lay out a road. As to where we need to make adjustments, where we need to um improve facilities, renovations, things like that. Um, so what we're doing is really just laying the groundwork for the next five years as to what we're gonna do with our facilities. A lot of that, I will say, is driven by that projected enrollment. Um, and I will show those updated numbers later. Something that I do wanna stress is um, we can make changes to this document. Um, but the example I've been using. Throughout the day is if a roof goes down, of course, we're going to address that. We don't need to wait until it's on the list. If there's an emergency, absolutely, we're going to address it. So the facilities master plan is really like a working document and should be updated regularly. This is just our overall process. Um, we started off with a plan for planning meeting. That was just me and Noel kind of hammering out timeline and things like that. We have received and will continue to receive data from you guys. Um, what I'm doing with all the data that we receive is putting it into a lot more. Viewable format. Um, you don't really wanna look at the data that I'm looking at. So, all of that, as it comes in, is going to be available on the project website, which I will get to in a little bit. Um, we do have an advisory committee. Uh, they are there, I have a whole slide on that too, but they are there to facilitate the process and make sure we're not. Coming up with outrageous ideas that aren't, aren't gonna work in the community. Um, they're really a sounding board for everything.
I do wanna recognize, we do have two of our um members here, Kelly and Michael are here with us to give us moral support if nothing else.
Awesome.
I'm sure will be with us tomorrow as well.
Awesome.
This is a committee that you've had for a long time.
Yeah, but we've changed a few members, but for the most part has been with us through um the two processes that we did before with grade configuration and such. So it's very helpful to have that historical knowledge.
So once we do come up with options, we will be holding a community meeting on March twenty-sixth, I believe. Um, and that will be to address the options and get community feedback from that. With that feedback that we receive in that meeting and we'll have online options as well, if folks can't show up to the meeting. We will be kind of shaping a recommendation, which will come to you probably in the form of options. So you'll receive all the feedback, all the options, so you can make your decision as to what, how we wanna move forward with that. So this is just our overall schedule. Um, the two things I do wanna point out are the futures conference, which is tomorrow. We're going to be presenting a lot of the background data, a lot of the visioning stuff, so we're gonna be talking about schools of the future and how education has changed over the last fifty years. It went kind of from like an industrial model with kids were just spit out the other end and now it's, it's very, it has changed, um especially with technology. So we're gonna be addressing all of that. Um, and then the community meeting, like I said, on March twenty-sixth is another big one.
Uh, will the materials from the community meeting tomorrow be available online?
Yep. Yeah, as soon as the meeting's over, we, we don't really post before most of the time, but once the meeting's over, we'll do it. We want people to, we want people to show up.
And I know she's gonna get to it, but we have a website page already built. Um, and. Everything that we do is on this page, including the archive of stuff we've done previous to now.
You were, I'm thinking of the futures conference and I'm thinking of the Tally Street Design Charrette or whatever you call it. But Cooperative Strategies was not part of the Tally Street Design, right? Is it the same, same kind of?
Same kind of format.
Same kind of thing, yeah.
Um, and we, we used our architecture firm to do that, but it's a very similar format to what we'll be doing.
Sounds like kind of similar content.
Yeah.
But on a more global scale.
Yeah, but huge scale.
So, again, I just wanna touch on the committee. Their role is to remain objective and consider the needs of all students. They may or may not have students. I actually haven't met them in person yet, um, but they need to remain um objective the entire time. They're not a policymaking group. That's, that's you all, and they're there to guide the process, like I said. Um, the project website, so if you've viewed our project website in the past and any of our other processes, it's the same URL. Everything is exactly the same. Um, you're actually able to still view any of our previous processes and this one will run very similar. Um, so if you're interested in the, what we, we did with redistricting or the grade configuration, everything is still on there.
Noel, where will the link be to that site?
We'll have that on the homepage. I'll walk with Cory to get that. It's already in our operations area under facilities master planning. If you go there. And dig, it's not hard to find right there. But um the other piece of this that's really important. The reason that I asked Karen to help keep that stuff up there is you can see a good kind of historical chronology of what we've done over the last. Four to five years in these processes and how it, it leads to where we are today and why it makes a whole lot of sense um going forward. And so we'll keep all that data there, especially in the grade configuration and elementary redistricting process. That's precursor to what we're doing now.
I wonder if it makes sense in these public meetings to emphasize some of the points that you just made in terms of process. Which is that uh we always have temporarily upset people, because we have presented options. Because obviously that's what we're trying to get them to, to approve. And um, there's a sense that we're not gonna listen and that this is all just a charade. And um, but if you look at what's actually happened in the past, you can see that we've, you know, we've, we've made kind of flipped proposals. Based on the input. And I think that sort of driving that home in these presentations that we have a track record. This, of this very process and, and we're listening and, and you know, the comments actually are what we're going to. Use to make a decision. I think trying to say that explicitly and saying, go look at the website and go look at what happened, cause you're gonna see it. Time and again, this is the way we're operating.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea.
Put that in there.
Absolutely.
That actually came up in one of our focus groups, a little differently, but came up in one of our focus groups about some of the ways that we need to present that out.
So I just wanna go through some background data quickly. Um, this is what we've been sharing with the focus groups, so we wanted to share with you all as well. Um, these are all of your sites to scale, so these are the parcels that you own. And again, to scale, so that's Decatur High School's actual size compared to Oakhurst's actual size. Something, a couple of things I do wanna point out, um Fifth Avenue and Decatur High School and Tally Street are all on multiple parcels. I merged them. Um, so like the high school sits on three parcels technically, but it, it looks like one in here. That's so we don't confuse people. Um, and then you do own those little parcels off of College Heights, Oakhurst and Westchester. Those are yours.
And the ones at College Height, the one at College Heights and the ones at Westchester are the homes that we purchased that are there. The one at Oakhurst is just the back parking lot.
Are we making a differentiation of the properties that are adjacent to city parks?
So that would be Oakhurst and what we've outlined.
And Fave too.
And Fave. Um, what we've, I'm sorry, yes, the corner at Fave. What we've outlined and what we've talked about explicitly in our groups today is. We're not including that in these boundaries. This is, this is land that we own and we control that is there. But we do in our conversations talk about, yeah, at Oakhurst, the green spaces adjacent, so we need to be considerate of. We use this as playground and we use this as playground. We own this, the city owns this, and that needs to be considered of. You know, we don't wanna just go plop a building right here next to where we're doing play space. So yes, we've had some very robust conversations around that today. I hope that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that, you know, when we think about, say, the square footage of each of these sites. From a practical standpoint, that is very usable play space. And so I feel like we almost, in some place, we might need two numbers, like two columns or just to show that. This is the actual usable space, but technically this is the city of Decatur owned space. Because Winona Park, also a butt to city park, and I think it's um important to be able to care, compare. How it, each piece of land feels and is used. Since if you subtract the park, the parks that are adjacent, it might give a. A, it, it might give an unrealistic feel for the size of the playable play space, if you know what I mean.
I think it's a good point. I think actually, unless I'm mistaken, Winona Park is the exact opposite, right? But what people see is the park space we own, whereas at Oakhurst, the playground equipment is the city's, right?
And the basketball court.
Yeah, and so I do think I, we can figure out a way to represent that, so people can see.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll, we can, um, and I'll use Oakhurst as an example, so if you orient the picture north, south, east, west. If we took that northwest quadrant there, outline the park, uh, the playground area, which is just above that big rectangle. We outline it in a different color and we can be very explicit about what that represents. And I think that would give a good perspective on it. Westchester's a little bit harder. If you look at what's there, um, we go all the way back to, in the outline of that, we go all the way back to the bridge that's part of Hidden Cove Park. So beyond that, really is not something we even consider using for the school unless it's a, hey, we're gonna go take a little.
Right, and it's not flat. You know, I can understand the difference of that.
Like you look at some of these and it's really deceptive. Like you think of what the topography at College Heights looks like, for instance, and. It's just.
And the Westchester uh sits in such a big flood plain there that really that's even an exaggeration of true usable space outside of green space.
Cause Fave there includes the city park, but Oakhurst there does not. Is that correct?
Fave does not either, so what I'll do is I'll add it to Fave, I'll add it to Oakhurst. Uh, we can do an outline on the Westchester piece if you would like, um, in that top northwest corner there.
Right, I think it's helpful.
It, it's not hard anything.
I agree.
We can delineate it as a city space.
Okay.
Great suggestion. Thank you.
Alright, so the next one shows the student density. Um, this is for all K twelve students. Um, the darker areas show higher student density and that's more students per square mile and the low, or the lighter areas show the lower. Student density, so you can kind of get an idea of where those pockets of higher density is. Um, the biggest one, of course, is like right where we are right now. Um, but you can kind of see the pockets elsewhere. There's one just north of um Fifth Avenue. There's one a little bit like northwest of Claremont. Um, but just to give you an idea of where, where the kids are coming from. So I have a much more daunting slide next. The, what I wanna show you on this one, this is your historical enrollment, um, and your projected enrollment. Um, and like Noel said, the projected enrollment is hot off the presses. We just got an updated version today, so nobody's seen these numbers yet. What I wanna point out with this one is that chart, so you can kind of see where we've been and where we're going. And you can see the giant boom in enrollment that has happened, like even over the last ten years, you've nearly doubled in enrollment. So this one's a little less daunting. Um, again, this shows historical enrollment for the last ten years and then five years of projected enrollment. Um, typically, what we like to do is plan to five years. The projections are a lot more accurate within the next five years. Going out further than that, it's.
See, I didn't just make that up.
You didn't make it?
No, it's.
I did not prompt her to say that.
In all of our processes, we plan to five years.
Exactly.
Yes, it's real.
Is the red just how overcrowded we are?
It, it's not overcrowding. It's just to show, yeah, it's conditional formatting to show larger classes, so anything darker is larger. And you can kind of see those darker areas moving through the system, like for example, the kindergarten class of sixteen, seventeen. You can see that class, when it moved to first grade, it got darker. Second grade, it got even darker, so you can see like the ups and flows.
Is the color coded in any way related to capacity? I would suggest we change the color, cause it makes it look like we have a code red.
Well, let me show you.
I see the American flag. I don't know what you see.
Our grade class is huge.
I can, I can do that.
Any preferred colors?
I, I can do that. That's, you guys are making easy requests. So, what this slide shows is the student yields. Um, the last two years, we've done a student yield analysis where we've taken all of your housing units. And analyzed really the number of kids that are coming out of each type. Um, we did it by neighborhood, boundary and things like that. Um, so this is just showing your overall yield. So how this is red, if you look at that single family subtotal, it's the last one in the gray. The four-year average for that is point five six, so that means about one kid is coming out of every two homes, K through twelve. Or you could also say a half a kid per house, but I don't, I don't like saying it like that. So. If you look through that list, apartments, we're looking at about one kid for every three apartments. Um, condos is one of ten or nine. The condo apartment combos, there aren't a lot of those units, but again, it's like one out of every ten, and then townhomes is about the same as single family. So part of what we did with this was look at all the developments that Noel and Heidi have um really been looking at and. Kind of projected the number of kids that come out of it. Keep in mind, this is kind of apples and oranges compared to the enrollment projections. But strictly looking at just the development, um, all we did was we took the number of units and multiplied it by the type, so. For apartments, the first one on that list is two forty North Arcadia, so a hundred and one units could potentially yield thirty-seven kids. Keep in mind, these are in different stages of development, so they could open tomorrow, they could open in five or six years. Um, so, yes, I do have that total on there of five hundred and sixty-eight. That will not all happen at once. Um, this is also assuming that all of these apartments are filled, so it takes a couple of years to build it and then a couple of years probably to fill the apartments completely. But if this, if everything were to finish tomorrow, we could expect five hundred and sixty-eight kids out of, out of it and it's about forty-four kids per grade. But it's not as daunting or scary as it looks.
Do you have the new Publix development up there at Sam's Crossing?
It's uh, it's what's listed as Gateway. Gateway, Decatur. I'm sorry, yeah, so if you look at our development report, it's got the, you know, fifty AKA names for each of these developments, so. Poor Heidi, you know, I sit in these meetings sometimes and kind of elbow each other and go, which one is that? Cause the name will change over. Yeah, so if you ever got, have a question on those, we'll be glad to.
I'm curious, where did the yield, did the yields come from? What data did the yields come from?
So a combination of city data and what we have from enrollment.
Well, but they, so basically Karen went and geocoded all of our students historically to the actual parcels where they live. And came up with the yields that way.
And the housing units are based on uh county data, counting address point data, so that's where those numbers come from. And then the student data comes from you guys.
Did it match what we have in our report? In our monthly report? Cause we have yields there too.
Yeah, it probably doesn't match exactly, cause two different methodologies, but it would be very similar.
I think it'll be interesting to see once they get populated, if it gets closer, so, yeah.
And the other piece of this is uh in our development report and Heidi currently, I don't know, but we have been updating number of units. And so you'll see some different numbers there because literally we'll sit down in a meeting and they'll go, oh, they knocked out ten more units in that complex, or they took out five units, or they're changing it to condos from townhomes or whatever. So some of those nu- numbers fluctuate, I think in the bigger picture, for the planning purposes, this is some real good accurate data.
So I think this is what you were looking for earlier with the, with the reds.
Can I dive in?
Absolutely, go for it.
We've been kinda tag teaming this uh data, what I wanna, what I would like to uh speak to is the far left column numbers, which is capacity. Um and you're gonna see some numbers here that may or may not match other things that you're working from. Um and what I, what I wanna explain is how we came up with that and what's behind that number. Um Dr. Didi and I about, gosh, it's been almost five years now. Went back and, and sat down and looked at what is the class size that we're averaging for those for those classrooms that we're gonna talk about when we talk about planning, so if you're looking at lower elementary classrooms, you're looking at twenty-four kids. Um uh upper elementary, same thing, middle school, you're looking at twenty-six, and for high school, you're looking at twenty-eight kids. And those are our average class sizes for planning purposes, for facilities planning.
What is, uh under enrollment and utilization, let's say like S Y.
Oh, that's the school year, I'm sorry.
Nineteen twenty?
Yeah, so twenty nineteen twenty, the next one's school year twenty twenty twenty-one.
So, once you take that, once you take that number, the next number that we use in the, in calculating capacity is instructional units. That doesn't represent every single classroom in the building. What we look at is, I'll take Westchester for example, um they have fourteen instructional units, those are rooms that could be used to house a homeroom classroom at the elementary level. That's not an art room, that's not a PE room, that's not a, some sort of auxiliary reading room or something else, those are classrooms that are available for that. Now, they may not currently be utilizing it that way, but when we look at the facility, that's what could be used for that. And that tracks true all the way through all of our facilities, so each of them have a certain number of instructional units, and we sat down and went through that um in this process of doing it. Then we talk about a utilization rate. So an elementary school is very efficient in the way that they use the rooms, cause the kids basically stay in that one room pretty much all day. And they're not moving around and there's not a lot of empty spaces, so they get a ninety-five percent utilization rate. Tally and Fifth Avenue, they start moving around and there's a little bit less utilization there, so they get an eighty-five percent. The middle school is a very fit, inefficient model because of the movement, and that runs at about seventy percent. And then the high school, we run it about eighty percent, and that has to do with class changes and things, so if you remember your high school experience, which we all try to, uh forget hopefully. You had, you know, seven periods a day and you traveled around to classrooms, so you were always in a classroom, but you had that teacher that had the the classroom that was open two of those seven periods a day maybe, so that classroom was not utilized all, all day to house students even though you were in a classroom all day. So that's where those utilization rates come from, I wanted to explain that on the capacity, because as we begin to talk about it, you may say, oh, well, I thought we could fit more kids into those because we've got, you know, three hundred kids at Westchester and they're not saying we're full. This is a way for us to account for um what we need in capacity for any fluctuations and the fact that kids uh we affectionately use this term, don't come in nice neat little packages, you don't get even numbers of kindergartners and first graders and all that every year. So by doing it this methodology, it helps to take care of those fluctuations and variables that fit into there. And then gives us a much more accurate way to um project and predict how that building could be used for us, and usually looks like a little bit lower number than the actual capacity really is. I can tell you as a principal, I can, I can make capacity work in a building very efficiently. Um scheduling and, and tweaking things and trying to get those nice neat little packages a little neater, so.
Just to see if, I, I think my mind wandered a little bit, so I'm gonna try to. The, the capacity number that you show for Decatur High School in nineteen seventy-one, is that the actual? Is that the, you said that we run DHS at eighty percent, so is that, is nineteen seventy-one eighty percent, so the ideal capacity is?
That's the ideal capacity. Because you're not able to put kids in all those classrooms. Now, there are ways to, to fluctuate that and you'll see in some of our.
Trying to figure out if I needed to discount the nineteen seventy-one or if it's already discounted.
Yeah, it's already discounted, great question. Okay, now Karen's speed.
Alright.
I talked about the first column, I'm done.
So instead of going through the utilizations one by one, I think this is a little bit easier, um this is what we've been showing to folks, so these are your utilizations by boundary. Um the colors and everything match this utilization slide too, I just like this better. So anything below eighty percent is blue, um we're considering that underutilized. Um green is kinda that sweet spot, anywhere between eighty and ninety-five percent, um once it hits ninety-five percent, we made it yellow just to show that we're, we're approaching um being fully utilized, and then anything over one hundred percent is in red. So you can kinda just get an idea, this is where we currently are, um this year. This is next year, so the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Twenty-one, twenty-two, you can kinda see the change in the upper elementary schools in this one. Twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-three, twenty-four. And then twenty-four, twenty-five is when Decatur High School hits that max. Oh yeah, so the upper elementaries are red in this one, they like are just barely at a hundred percent, I think it's like a hundred point oh one. They hit the breaking point, but it's, it's still a comfortable number. Um and I do think I have the lower elementary school switched, that should be Winona Park the whole time, I apologize about that. Okay, so in terms of the focus groups and the futures conference tomorrow, um the focus groups were sharing the process and the background information and asking them a series of questions, um it's really a guided discussion to talk about everything under the sun that has to do with facilities master planning, and I, I have examples on this following slide. Um the futures conference tomorrow will be more of like a high-level introduction to facilities master planning, we're really gonna touch on what this is going to do for the district, um again, we'll share process and background information. And we're gonna talk a lot about like current and past trends in education, visioning, and then how to prepare students for the future.
And we will have a, a pared-down version of what we've been doing with the focus groups to gather information from folks that are there as well.
Along with a survey that people can fill out if they can't, if they can't come tomorrow.
How, how did you advertise the futures conference?
Couple different ways, um we've had it on our website, we've blasted out, Courtney, do you remember how many views we've had on on the invitation that we've sent out for tomorrow?
So it was sent out to Decatur residents?
It was sent out in our newsletter blast and it was put out onto the website. Um so it was not sent out through a citywide email.
It was sent out in, um in Patty Garrett's email blast to this, to anyone who, in the city who signed up for it, it was mentioned there, yeah.
I have a question. So how are we, you know, one of the, one of the, you know, there's a couple uh facilities uh priorities that uh historically has been a board priority and I, you know, we'll need to discuss whether it's still, still the case. But eh this facilities process is the time when we're gonna look at, for instance, relocating the ECLC.
You might wanna wait, um so I think you're probably gonna get to that, right? Let him get to those slides and hold that question.
Yeah, I have one more.
Okay, I do have a question, when we were on the boundary stuff and talking about what the buildings were for the capacity, there was a big issue about whether the modules were counted for capacity, and then we came back and had a conversation about some of the module classrooms were permanent. And what we, and what we showed here tonight, they are not counted in those capacities.
So that's why in those graphs, um you might have Karen mentioned, it was Winona Park that should have been red. Um Winona Park still has those four modulators and still needs those four modulators for the foreseeable future.
Glenwood also basically has permanent ones.
No, Glenwoods are coming out actually in a couple of months.
And their enrollment doesn't need it at this point.
So this is my last slide, um I just wanted to give an example, a couple of examples of what we're asking the focus groups and what we'll be asking tomorrow at the futures conference. So we're having discussions about district-wide growth and crowded buildings, mainly if, if they think the district is growing, if they think the buildings are crowded, things like that. Um we're presenting some non-capital solutions to address overutilization, um mainly it's more for secondary schools. There's not a whole lot you can do at the elementary level, but secondary, there are non-capital options, um as well as capital options too, those are always on the table. Um we're discussing preschool and pre-kindergarten, um the possibility of maybe expanding those programs. Um athletic facilities, safety and security, and then ideas and personal values related to facilities planning.
And there's one more that's not up here that's related to the athletic facilities or, or those specialized facilities, and we've got a focus group that is devoted to extracurricular um uh fine arts, fine and performing arts as well tomorrow. Um so we've, we're, we're trying to cover all those, so to, so to come back um Louis to your question, we have included all of that and encompassed that in the questions that we're asking and in the sort of feedback we're trying to elicit from folks is, you know, first off, wha- what are your feelings about preschool here, what are your feelings about expanding the program, what are your feelings about pre-K specifically, about zero to three specifically? Should it stay in the building where it's at, should we expand it, those kinda things, should we provide some other alternatives for low-income families, things like that? So we are, we're trying to dig as deep as we can into these conversations and the, I can tell you so far today, the one hour that we have allotted to doing this has turned into just about two hours for each of the groups, and um great feedback, I can give you a, a, an example on non-capital solutions, a lot of people have come to us with, hey, have you thought about um this kind of uh programming and work from the counselors to help students understand and know about more off-campus opportunities and things to help reduce enrollment? Or in the uh capital side of things, well, have you thought about, you know, maybe instead of doing a full-on addition, maybe changing this, this configuration around in this building and maybe get some more efficiency, so it's been a very, very productive discussion.
It, it sounds exactly right and, and the perfect way to do it, it raises a question in my mind about how we use it and at what point do you sort of put a thumb on the scale? And as I just said, I wanna put a thumb on the scale of more seats in the ECLC so that we can expand that program and serve more of the people who would benefit from it, and I would be disappointed if we came, uh if we were presented with recommendations that didn't do that. And uh, and so, you know, I wouldn't, you know, if the, if the, if the, on the one hand, it uh, that's sort of my, that's my focus, uh on the other hand, uh it's good to get the I, I guess the, maybe it's a check-in before we run too far down the path with the preferences that you've gotten from these focus groups.
Uh my guess is what you'll find is, I don't think we have unique perspectives up here that don't reflect the community in many ways, and so I think you will get the options that will fit a lot of the philosophies, cause that's why we. One would hope. I would think so.
So I think the other response to that too is as we are coming back to you hopefully each month with a robust or just a, hey, we're still on track update. And we begin to get some, some ideas for options, especially as we approach that March meeting. Um once we've gotten some of that refined, bringing that to you all and you may decide, hey, we need to have a work session on this and sit down and talk or um something, but once you get that, that document from us in June, our expectation is, we have presented all of this input, we have presented all of these options, and there is space there if no other place up to that, to have that discussion and say, hey, we need you to go back and this proposal or this pro, this piece doesn't include an option that we've been discussing or we've been thinking about or I've been thinking about. Go back and look at that and put that in there and give us a revised.
And I'll, and I'll share anecdotally for that specific thing, there are already community groups lobbying their supporters to make sure that that pre-K, preschool subsidized um uh support for low-income families gets on the list, so. That's like we would expect in Decatur, that's our, it has started.
Even with just three focus groups today, we've covered a lot of the things that, that I have heard over the past three.
Okay, good.
And ECLC is by far the most popular thing we talk about.
How were the focus groups chosen?
Wow, um so I reached out to um specific stakeholder groups in, in certain areas and said, hey, we're looking for some folks to do this, trying to get a good mix of people. So for athletics, I reached out to Rodney and his team and said, hey, I need you to bring some folks who have been um out there working on some of these projects or thoughts or processes for facilities for athletics, um same thing for the performing and fine arts. The bulk of them are coming from PTA, PTO, PTSA and SLT leadership. We reached out and tried to do them um homogeneously so that we're not getting like, you know, the Spring Lane Elementary posse coming to one group, so we're getting multiple perspectives in each, and we gave them uh six different options to sign up for daytime, afternoon time, things like that, so. Um some of it is reaching out to specific groups to get folks and some of it is um throwing a little bit wider cast net. If there is a group that you feel like we have missed or need to get to, please, you know, through David communicate to me and let me know and we can come back and and get to that, but I think we've had a very good response, we've got probably, I'm not gonna guess off the top of my head, but we've got almost ten focus groups that we've got put together to do this work. I even met with the city this morning as our first focus group with all of the city folks there that we work with from after-school program to the um, to the active living, to uh the building department, to the planning department, so they were all there, and we had a very, very good conference today.
Do you feel like you have a, a good representation of um, from the Decatur Housing Authority community?
So I will know better tomorrow, I think the response has been okay, I don't think it has been great. Um one of the things that we've talked about is, once we have finished and completed and see who shows up, cause you know, eight people will sign up and four will show up. One, and we've sent thirty invitations just to get the four, so once we get completed, if I feel like we have not gotten good representation from them or any other groups, we will reach back out and run another set of these. Karen will train me up before she leaves.
And I do know that Doug Faust is working hard to make sure, like he and his board and residents are aware too.
And just a note, the city has been awesome in helping us with gathering data and getting stuff there, so that partnership that we've been working on with them over the years has just really paid off big time, especially today, so.
That's all I got, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you guys for your time and we appreciate it.
Alright, on future dates, um I just wanna give you a heads up, we will send out a poll to set the January work session tomorrow morning, um just for folks who aren't aware in the audience, maybe the um state-of-the-city address and event is the same night as our work session, so we're gonna be moving that, so. Um I will try to remember to text you all to say, hey, go do the poll, and if you could make a point of responding to the poll, that would be fantastic. Um because we want to bring a budget to February, and so if we can't get that work session scheduled timely in a way that gives us time then to put together a budget for February, we really are pushing hard to get a February to have basically our final budget.
Should we just talk about the date right now?
We can, I've just found that isn't always amenable, but I'm happy to if we.
Do you have a couple of dates already in mind?
I do not.
We're still trying to do it in January though, right? And did you all say that you all are meeting with the city on the twenty-eighth also, on the same day?
So the original date for this thing.
Was the twenty-eighth. I cannot do any Mondays um for the next six weeks.
Oh, and I'm the one who doesn't have my, my work.
Alright, we'll send out a poll. I will try to do it. We'll either do it tonight or first thing in the morning, and I am going to text you incessantly until you're, you've participated.
And, and let's try to focus on like the same week if, if at all, I know you can't do Monday, you just said, like if we could do it Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. Cause otherwise we're gonna get behind.
And we have the open house on the thirtieth, so we won't be able to do it that.
Maybe we could do it after the open house, I mean, the open house isn't gonna be that long, and that, that, that would be ideal because uh brings I mean, I'm coming in town early anyway.
And we usually start our work sessions at seven anyway.
I know, I could come to that, so I'm free.
That's my vote, that's my vote.
Alright.
Yeah, so like, probably seven, I thi- I think seven's actually probably safe by the time we do the other, but I'll double check on the plans, but.
I won't be able to do it.
Okay.
I was gonna leave, I was supposed to go someplace, and so I was gonna leave right after the open house.
So I'm gonna send out a poll.
Okay, alright.
Alright, it was worth a shot.
You warned us.
Sometimes it works.
Well, then you'll be in good stead.